of things that you will have, where are you going to park everyone?
I did reserve the back part of that vacant lot for parking if needed, if that was something that you.
Have you got it plotted out as to how many vehicles you might be able to get in there?
No, we don't. We would have the architect drawn up.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just so you know, ordinance in the downtown doesn't really require, or we haven't been requiring parking just as expanded. We would, but they can't get the council to bite on saying for every parking stall, they cannot provide, they give a thousand dollars of paper per parking spot somewhere. So it really is not.
I know it's not, it's a matter of permits, but it's.
It's a good thought.
Yes.
Going to create issues down the road, I just know that.
In my opinion, if the planning commission would bite on, I have to get counsel too, and I mentioned to Jane tonight, I think we should support helping the parking lot.
Well, even if it gets leveled off a little bit, may haul in more truck, that will put a whole row of.
No, if I'm going to hook a truck, I'm going to go back.
Okay.
And maybe have one row parking up on Dakota Street and the rest would be down below, it might be three rows parking would be nice.
Yes.
Get forty, fifty cars down there, which would help all the business, not just.
Okay.
Yo.
That's some.
Okay, so parking, alright.
Quick question for you, Eric, are you planning to fill that in with dirt and then build on it, or were you thinking?
It depends if we do patio or decking, so, I mean, you know, with the decking, it would be more like posts and it would be off of the ground. But we're getting, we would like to get estimates for both and kind of, we can re-present, you know, with those estimates once we decide.
So when you say the front lot, you mean Broad Street side of all?
Right, correct, yeah.
And you maybe do two tiers too?
We'll see.
What's your timeframe, do you think?
Really, just estimates now, I mean, we don't anticipate that we would do anything within this year, but, I mean, it would be great if we could, just because outdoor seating is. Demand right now, so, you know, we want to get moving on it as quickly as we can, but realistically, it really just depends on, you know, the permits and everything getting approved and how fast.
The other question.
How much property do you own to the riverside of that building?
From what I know, it goes really down to the street from when I, the street on the backside of the property, yeah. And it's, we have, we do own the building of the Prescott Roadhouse and also their adjacent lot.
The whole lot goes over to the next building.
Yeah.
How much additional seating do you think that's going to be?
Um, you know, we haven't had it done up because it's just a concept, but it would be, it would be, you know, triple what we have, yeah.
Twenty times four, about eighty more people.
But right now, our capacity, yeah, right now, our capacity is like thirty-eight, you know, so it's not a lot, so, I mean, you're talking about a hundred fifty total, maybe.
Huh? As I'd say, it's terrible having an inspector, because in reality, once you go over fifty, I think you have to add additional bathrooms.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, and there is plumbing there on the street that would go in and we anticipate needing additional bathrooms.
My thought too though is, I think you could allow this, pretty quick bathrooms in the basement.
Some, but I mean, I'm assuming it would have to be on the same level as where the seating is, so.
Again, if you have the lower patio.
Right, then, yeah.
You could have at least those two and the two upstairs, that way you aren't trying to steal up all your upstairs space.
Possibly, yeah.
Because in the seasons, you don't need both, all of them upstairs that you're going to do on that side.
Yeah.
So just a thought, but that's something I would say, yeah, additional bathrooms would be required.
Yeah, I would, I mean, we anticipate that, just because we almost had to add bathrooms the way it was and it was pretty small.
I think you did add one.
Do you have a unisex bathroom now?
We don't, it's a one male and female, so not unisex right now.
There's one for each sex.
Yeah.
Let's quote it.
Yeah.
Anything else anyone has, any thoughts or questions, I guess, another thought, maybe this is on Jane's, probably it would be somewhat fenced in.
It would be fenced on the front.
At least guards around the decks to keep, you know, again, sort of all, a lot of times, they have a barrier.
Yeah, definitely a barrier, and it is in the drawing too.
I see a little black spot.
Yeah.
That's a pole, oh, that one.
Would that decking area go completely butt up to the building on the other side?
Really, I don't know what the setbacks are, so we would have to find out if there are any setbacks, typically there, there's a narrow, there's a narrow passageway that's between all the brick buildings, so I'm assuming there'll be something that wouldn't be able to go up to, yeah. Some kind of setback requirements, I'm not exactly sure what they are.
That was a common wall before.
Yeah, when it was a building.
Yeah, so it's either ten foot separation from combustible to that wall, that's the three hour rate of wall, right? Another thing, are you, so you're doing it in phases, you're looking to do the front, Broad Street side?
Right, so the front half of the lot would be first for the outdoor seating, yeah.
Yeah, the addition in back?
The addition in back would likely come later, but.
Removing the existing deck back there.
Right, exactly, actually where that existing deck is would become part of the actual inside of the building and stuff, so that would be.
Would you address down to the bottom more than a metal hall would be great, is that what you're thinking?
Um, then I'm not sure, yeah, I mean, I feel, I'm not sure if that would be inside the building, the stairway would be inside, outside or both.
Because you'd have to have another deck.
Yeah, yeah, I feel like we would need something, yeah, interior and then also outside.
Keep it up, go up the back and bring it toward the front, so it's not as long.
Yeah.
Yeah, saving costs.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're all about saving costs.
What's your capacity occupancy before you have to have the bathrooms marked? Well, you start putting that thing on the outside.
I guess, when they go from where they're at now, thirty-nine is really considered, the restaurant would be under the business occupancy, and once you go over that.
I thought it was fifty, but it could be seventy.
I think, yeah, it might be over fifty, once they go over fifty, then it becomes a different occupancy, and at that point, you know, you've got to bring it up, you know, at least have a accessible bathroom or both, you know.
That's going to have to be in their planning when they.
Right, yeah, this was our simple concept, we didn't really want to hire an architect unless you get URL, you know, onboard.
And just so you know, you're going to, if you do plans, I would do the whole thing.
Yeah.
Plan, right, do a phase, plan good for two years from state.
Okay.
It only costs you one plan review fee for putting it all in one plan, if you don't do it, well, it's going to cost you the same amount, FYI.
Yeah, good to know.
Yeah, and we'll, we can help you look for some economic grant money too.
Awesome.
Yeah.
There's some private owned businesses and stuff, yeah.
Great.
So, any other questions?
Do you have any plans for maybe, set of stairs on the backside of that, go down to the lower level, or does everybody, case, they have to get off that decking area, y'all have to.
Go into the building, I mean, for safety, I would not, I would want to put something on the outside, yeah.
It looks like they got the gate there.
Yeah.
On the front.
On the, on the front, but on the back.
But on the back, it does go through the building.
Because if they brought that deck up to the level of the building, which is cost one, two, basically the building, so you've got to get them all aside, and possibly the street street, that would be with stairs, maybe, that's something again, you're. Zeus says, on that same box, you've got to get them all to the street or to an alleyway off the building.
Right, yeah.
I was saying, it's just to the deck, but I think this is different than residential.
Yeah, for whatever reason, we wouldn't want people jumping off the backside.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, I feel like, that's why I'm not sure about that back half of the lot, I know the front half, the exit obviously would be towards the street and it's all on that level, but on the back where the new addition would be, we would need a next, you know, fire exit.
Questions, any other questions?
And a quick question for you, so this is, actually, you're going to have kind of a bar area in it as well?
Comfort, um, I mean, we're just beer and wine, but it would, yeah, it'd be nice to have it so that it's not only the servers running it into the building for beer and wine or beverages.
You might get the liquor license.
We'll see. That's why I left the space for the parking, I know that was objection, so, we're not, we're not, we're leaving that open for that.
Rob, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, I think it looks really good, uh, it's great that they're adding on to it and everything, you know, congratulations and good luck with that.
Thank you so much, we love being here.
Anything else for anybody, if not, everyone okay with the concept, correct, we just, you know, there's a couple of issues, but there's still, so, I think, you get a plus from the council too, but the planning commission is, they definitely like it.
Wonderful, thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Alright, next item on the agenda is a discussion on proposed trails, who wants to talk about that? He and I go Warner talks a lot. You don't know who Bill Warner is, though, do you?
No, but I bet I could beat him out, I'm sure we could have some good competition then.
I always pick that bill up, I said, don't give them markers and a whiteboard, keep them right all day long.
Oh my gosh, that would be all, yeah, I think we are on the same page, but notice there's no whiteboard for me here. And no markers, but I did bring handouts, so we didn't get these to you ahead of time. You know what, I'll just have to take one and pass it down, don't mind.
Speak to the, to the, what do you call it, the computer over there, Jane's computer.
Will do.
Give a second on it.
Uh, yeah.
One for you. I want to make sure you're on the air.
Right here.
You're, you're perfect, yeah, that's good.
Alright.
Do not distribute.
Do not distribute, that's right, this is highly confidential in a public meeting, right? So, so I'll, I'll talk through this a little bit, my name's Israel Haas, I'm Executive Director at the Great River Road Visitor and Learning Center, and I've been there for a year and a half, and as we have been thinking about what kind of impact can we make in making Prescott a better place and helping advance our mission, started talking with some folks about trails, and came up first with the superintendent, back almost a year and a half ago, and he said, hey, we got some trails on the school district property, why don't you come take a look at this, wonder if we can work out, work with you a little bit. One thing led to the next, led to the next conversation, led to the next connection, and now we have the National Park Service working with us, we have two members from the National Park Service, the Rivers Trails and Conservation Assistance Program, who have looked at our project proposal and said, we think this has big enough regional significance that we want to invest our National Park Service staff with you. That has been part of what we brought together, you'll see on the backside of the sheet, some of our partners, obviously, we have the city of Prescott involved in this, Jane is behind us, and Mayor Hovel wrote a recommendation that helped us get National Park Service representation. We have the school district involved in this project, private landowners on potential areas where the trail could go, US Fish and Wildlife Service, Landmark Conservancy, Pheasants Forever, Prairie Enthusiast, Carpenter Nature Center is helping from a consultation standpoint, UW River Falls is involved with one of the professors who's, who's part of this project, Pierce County Parks, on, we have connected with this project, the Wisconsin DOT, believe it or not, is a hundred percent behind us in this project, and we'll be looking, working with them to find funding as we move along. We're also connecting with the town of Oak Grove and find, because some of the project is going to lap into town of Oak Grove and potentially trying to get some connections with tribal, tribal representation as well, so we are covering all of our bases and making sure that we have full representation in the project, now, as we think about this, we're, we're just right in the beginning stages, and the whole reason I wanted to come in and talk with you is because I know you have a plan, and some of that is encapsulated in the comprehensive plan. Our project integrates very well with some of the objectives that the city has long term in terms of cultivating natural spaces and developing tourism business and other types of things, so I think this really could shape some of the way the city develops and really bolster some of the long-term planning that you have put into the comprehensive plan. Um, so I want to open it up a little bit for questions as well, but my main reason is just to let you know what's going on, because this is right at the beginning stages, I wish we had a big old packet to show you and all the agreements and the legal matters and the funding sources and everything. We're just right at the beginning, in fact, last week, our steering committee just came up with our names, we've been kicking around names with our broader project group, and this is tentative still, but I put it on your do not distribute sheet, Cooley River Trails, maybe, the way that we start talking about ourselves, because what we're trying to do is connect these different areas, and you can see on the map, it's very, very, very small, okay, but we have, we have seven, we have six potential areas that we're trying to connect, down from the north side on the school district, we're calling that Zone One, coming down through private property and Zone Two, Zone Three is McGee Park, Zone Four is Kim Christiansen's property, pine Cooley, some of you have been around long enough to know what that's all, what they all represent.
Look at them laugh over there.
And you know how beautiful that area is, and some unique geological formations with potential black tights in a collapsed cave that's probably there, just awesome area, and Kim is really, really on board with us on trying to preserve that area forever, and he also has some property that goes into town of Oak Grove, obviously, that's not in consideration for you guys at this point, and then potentially wrapping up on, into some other areas of potential development and trail areas, so it's just right now in, in, in ideation phase. And we want to invite you to talk with us about your plans too, because we want to shape this in a way that is best for the city. We have potential funding sources from federal and state, if we plan this right and we develop this right, it could really shape the way that the, that the city grows. The city's going to grow, let's be part of some really intelligent, ecologically sensitive, economically, strategic development opportunities, so, questions about kind of the overview of the trail?
And I think we talked a little bit, Israel, one of the reasons like we want planning commission is involved is as we're looking at these plaques that are new developments that are coming in, we should be also considering where trails are going to go possibly in those subdivisions, we talked a lot, I think, at one of our meetings, so, I think it was with Holly and you and I, about how sidewalks are somewhat different than trails, and so, you know, we're looking for sidewalks a lot of times, or subdivisions, but we really maybe should be thinking about more of a trail type of a situation, so I think that's kind of one of the reasons Israel kind of has come to you guys tonight too, because you're, you're the first ones to see those plaques.
Yep, and I know you guys have seen a lot of stuff before, you couldn't even talk to us about it. And so thinking about what is the potential for connection to help connect the different areas around the city so that we can avoid travel along the roads, or if we're building new roads, how do we integrate that with trails, whether those are gravel trails, maybe ten foot wide gravel trails, or those are paved trails, it does, and as Jane mentioned, if we do sidewalks, there's one thing, if we do trails that are potentially paved or gravel trails, that can open up other sources of funding, especially since we're close to national park areas, those types of things, so.
Yeah, trails are a multi-purpose bike, blocking everything, or sidewalks more for people.
Correct. Yep.
Is your thought to have different types of trails, so some trails would be paved, some would be gravel?
Yeah, so we want to try to provide connections for everybody, right, so some of the, some of the, what we're envisioning right now, may or may not be realistic, but what we're envisioning right now is, is a central loop type trail that would be ADA accessible, probably natural surface, just because it's easier to maintain, a lot cheaper to build, but it all depends on what kind of funding sources are available and what the community wants, and where the trail is going to go, so, and a central ADA accessible gravel trail, easy to use, it could be for biking, walking, you know, in the, in the winter, snowshoeing, other types of things, and then off of that, we would have other potential trails that would be more single track type trails, potentially mountain bike optimized trails, and that, don't get scared by mountain bike optimized, it just means that, that those trails could be used for mountain bike club, for instance, with the school district. Mountain biking is, is a huge and growing sport, could attract a lot of attention, just like it has in River Falls and other areas, um, but it's also really good for just hiking, dogs, taking, I'm envisioning this in my role as Executive Director at the Great River Road Visitor and Learning Center, we're stuck with our little tiny park in terms of programming potential, but if we can expand our influence into other areas, I have a vested interest in creating spaces for interpretive snowshoe hikes with kids or something, help them experience the watershed in different ways, it's not just on the water, it's about the land, the woods, the forests, the birds, and getting people in the nature and providing those opportunities.
But we're not talking motorized trails.
No motorized trails.
Not golf cart trails or anything like that, we're not talking that at all.
Alright, any questions?
If anybody want to bring out a whiteboard, they probably go for a few more minutes.
I'll pull one outside for you.
It's the Allo sucker with them.
They can hold it all. I'll put this, I think the, the planning commission likes the concept, and that would be, I think Jane would agree, at some point, the planning commission, put it on our, our plan, committee from the council would say, okay, we need to adopt it, that's part of it, adopting, once this report brings this more finalized, we can put it into our plan, so that's, you need to do that in order to get funding, you have to say, hey, this is in our plan, we want it done, so, that's something that's down the line, we're going to probably be doing.
Have you seen the new development that's going to be out on Off-Oster that we've already?
Yes, yep, and I've been talking with Alan Win.
Okay, good, because they don't like anything about sidewalk.
No, and they're not too excited about trails either, um, so, there's, but we have been talking with them, and.
No, at this level, we can make it say we want a trip, either, because technically.
That would be awesome.
Technically, we can say you put a sidewalk in every street, which is our ordinance, or maybe we say, you put a main multi-purpose trail down through the development.
That would be great.
We push for that, but maybe it's from north to south, they do want to go a little bit.
Well, and with the park and integrated with the park and potentially coming up from the, from the south and connecting, there are different ways that it could be integrated, so. Huge, huge, I have people in their existing developments who are asking me, begging me, can you use your influence and get some kind of trails, connecting to the school, get us into town, yeah.
So I think, I think. Existing residents.
It's going to get up, it's going to get away if we don't, or get it now.
If we don't, it, it, exactly, exactly, that's why I would love to be part of any conversations you guys have, to build this out into ten, twenty, thirty year plans. Well, we, we'd love to come back once we have a little more clarity on, on directions, and I'll invite some other folks from the steering committee so you can meet them, and that'd be great.
Yeah, they could start working on it this year.
Yeah, yes.
I think we'll be all supportive, if we have to do something, if we. Hey, can we get help with this? Maybe more staff, the commission will also say, yeah, we need to write, let's get it on the agenda.
That would be great, and of course, in my highly confidential document that I distributed in a non-confidential way, need from the city, that's exactly it, you know, we really need you guys to help us get things in writing, because it's one thing to have commitments and have verbal and conversations and have, have friendly relationships with private landowners, but you guys are the ones that can make it happen.
That's very good.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Alright, is there any other business to be discussed tonight?
No, I think you guys talked already about the parking, we were just going to talk about that a little bit, so.
Yeah, I'm going to try to talk to the council, they maybe wish that, we had other ideas, whether it's just not coming to fruition, I just think we need the parking, I think we put it in, we can always build over the top, but if we find someone really wants to.
What are you talking about?
I just, one note, my freedom, what I, what I want is basically to get back, whether we do pilings, you know, or even four kind of three walls, but I thought even if you do steel pilings, drag them down and then have one row parking up off of Dakota, and down below would just be basically level, almost level with the parking out of the gas station down there, it's kind of centrally located. That's what I like to see.
Would you put parallel parking or?
Well, I think I would do whatever we can.
Angle parking.
I might be angle, because I might wonder if I could get three or four rows.
All in there.
Three or four rows down there.
On a higher level.
Oh, I think I might do that, well, angle would be, maybe go one way and make it angle, yeah.
I think that'd be good, get prides out there for cheaper.
Yep, you can do it just to craft stuff.
Or, or maybe we find, in order to get four rows down below, we have to do the parallel parking, but you get more down below, that would be probably best. We'll look into that, alright, any other business?
I do believe we will have a, what do we, March or April, because I think the most will probably be in with theirs, maybe, we'll see.
Okay.
So just kind of look for yourself.
Alright, sounds good.
Israel have grown by then.
Any other business?
Still be farther ahead than us. Nope.
Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Rock, count on.
Second motion.
Motion made, second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, motion carried, thank you everyone for your participation tonight. You should do what I think, yeah.
Oh.
I think.